We are ready.
Yep.
Good morning all and welcome to the January 25th meeting of the Barnstable County Commissioners. It is 9:20 and we are 20 minutes late getting started due to significant traffic issues at Exit 6 this morning. And Sheila will be here a little bit later, so actually we were all late.
Yep.
So let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please join me in a moment of silence for all of those who serve our country both here and abroad and those who have given their lives. Okay, so I think we can start with the public comment and I...
We have the usual gap of thousands out in the audience.
Right.
We don't pan the audience because we don't want to embarrass the people who are here.
So we don't, we don't have... You might want to check who's here today. Did you have anything you want to say David?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, then we'll move off public comment and move to the Commissioners' actions to vote the, approve the minutes of previous meetings and votes of...
I've looked at that and I'm ready to move it.
Okay, and I'll second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, unanimous. And then we have the summary of items to approve. There are 16, actually 17.
I have looked at that, actually I thought that was what I looked at before. I've looked at this and I'm good with that. I will move these.
Okay, and I'll second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, unanimous. So maybe you can kind of set the stage for us this morning, Mark?
I have a couple of business things first if you just, if you don't mind. I do have the revised remote participation policy that I added one clause to and it says, it's number nine in the procedures, in the list of items. Any member of a public body who normally receives a mileage reimbursement for physical attendance at the public body meetings and who participates remotely in a meeting shall not be eligible for any mileage reimbursement for that meeting. So it sort of clarifies that.
Okay.
So you can sign that and then...
Okay, I advised the MPO that we had passed this and that they were now allowed to have a, you know, remote attendance as long as it was a quorum in the room. But did not suggest to them that, you know, that they could, how would you say, make any regulations more restrictive than we have.
Are they a county body or are they some other body?
They're an, the MPO has been set up to be a regional body and as such I think it sort of goes between those two things, the state and the county. So from the county point of view, I thought it was useful to...
Who appoints them?
We appoint the members to the MPO.
We, the county commissioners?
For example, you appoint me to it.
No, but do we appoint the entire body?
No.
Then it's, then they wouldn't come under our jurisdiction.
Really?
That's kind of the question, is it a county body?
Unless we appoint the body, they're not a public body of county government.
Right.
So they would have to have some other...
Yeah.
I mean, they can take the policy and adapt it for their use, I would think. Change some of the wording, but they wouldn't be...
I think, I think that's a, thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, it may be that the state or the governor or whoever is sort of the appointing authority.
Yeah.
Well, I know that they had mentioned that they were working with Attorney General as well to, you know, to clarify some parts, but...
Yeah.
And they may have other issues.
Yeah, I've shared that with, I think Charlie Sumner and sent it to Bob Lawton. He'll distribute it. But I think for them, for the towns, it's probably less of an issue than it is for the county where we have so many sort of regional, we have bodies with people from spread out all over the Cape and Martha's Vineyard sometimes and Antarctica sometimes. So it's more, for us, the whole kind of remote participation, I think is a bigger issue rather than just located in a town.
And you know, it probably might be helpful since we are all have a liaison to one of these committees that if we're the liaison, that we take that policy and go to that meeting and explain it to the public body.
Sure, yeah.
And actually go over with them what their responsibilities are going to be. And if they have any questions, they should contact Bob Troy.
Yeah.
They don't need to contact the AG directly. But do that, I think that would be helpful. That's what I thought if we ever get them done in the town, that that would be an appropriate thing to do because there's so many, there's like 56 public bodies in a town sometimes.
Yeah.
And they all have to understand it. So I think it's important to have some body, whether it's a town manager or whatever, or us. But since we're liaisons to all of these groups...
What I'd suggest is that they maybe contact me first instead of we having 40 people contacting Bob Troy independently.
Oh, well, that's, that's true.
Maybe they should go through me and if there's something that we need clarification on...
Very good idea.
Can I get through Bob?
The, in a related area, when we were at MMA, we had gone to that session that was run by the Attorney General with regard to open meeting issues.
Not into that, yeah.
And several of the smaller towns in Massachusetts were, you know, were saying that they have lost a lot of volunteer membership because of the, you know, what they view as the onerous open meeting law requirements.
If you look at them, they're not that different from what we've been doing. They're really not. You just have to be a little more clear in your agenda.
Yeah, I think there was some confusion over some of the stuff. I think executive session is a little bit more onerous, maybe that. But I think the regular open meeting stuff is...
Well, I think it had to do with, when I was listening, was the town clerks were imposing a, let's say, an onerous, well, let's say, a restrictive agenda on the, you know, on the volunteers. But that could have been resolved by, you know, let's say by having meetings that were posted on a calendar, you know, over a long period of time with, let's say with...
Like the calendar of meetings for the year.
Right, and then with a, you know, with an agenda that would be submitted by the chair, you know, sometime, you know, within the, you know, within the means. It seems to me it was more of a scheduling problem than it was a, you know, let's say, a problem that was, that came out of the thing.
Well, or an organizational problem. Like for instance, the clerk, if they, they all have email. You could set up one email site in the clerk's office. And anybody who needs to post a meeting sends it to that office so that if one person's not there, everybody has access to that email address. It goes to each person who works in the office. So somebody picks it up, acts on it, posts the meeting, confirms that the meeting's been posted, and that's all they have to do. We have a committee that I know, that Board Equality Management. I was talking to the chair and he said, "Oh, it's really easy. I just sent the email to that email address. I got a confirmation back that the meeting's been posted." And so they, they feel comfortable going forward. So it's, you know, it's not that hard.
Every problem has a, has a resolution if you think about it.
Yes, exactly.
So I have one other thing and that is a request to use the Orleans District Courthouse parking area on Saturday, September 8th from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And that's for the MS Multiple Sclerosis Challenge Walk. We've done this in the past, the past several Septembers. So I would recommend that you approve that use. They only want to use the parking lot.
I'll move that.
Second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, unanimous.
So I'll send them a letter letting them know.
I thought the MMA meeting, since we talk about our reports and where we've been, was really good this year. I think the attendance was far better than it's been in the past. Steve, could you hand me my letter? Now that I open the window. The, the attendance was better, the meetings were good. And I, I just, I really liked it. The Mass Luckman Group had a meeting on performance review, which was really interesting. So when I sort through all the, all the...
Materials.
All the materials that we picked up, I think will be very helpful.
When I was, you know, when I was in the private sector, one of the things I used to say when we went away to a meeting, excuse me, we came back with one useful idea. The meeting was, you know, was good. And from my recollection, there were several useful ideas that we were being, that we were being promoted. I also liked the fact that they had taken resolutions with regard to supporting Safety Loop, which is something that, you know, that I've been pushing for at NACO. And that, you know, NACO is a, you know, as a, as an organization, we've been pushing for it. You can't have, you know, I'd say a cohesive transportation activity unless you have something to back it up. The other thing that I didn't hear mentioned that I think needs to be approved at the federal level and when, at the next meeting of the committee that I serve on at MMA, I'm going to bring that up, is to lobby for what I would call the institution of an energy policy, a national energy policy. We talked about this forever, but we don't, you know, but we don't have one. So, you know, perhaps, you know, given, you know, given what I read in the paper about what goes on locally and what, what needs to be done nationally, I think that this is something that, you know, that we should pay a lot of attention to. But anyway, I thought it was a useful meeting. I had the balance of learning something and having a little bit of fun.
I thought the speaker I sat to Pat the other day at the Maya luncheon, Mark Fenton?
Mark Fenton.
Was very good. I thought he was, you know, very enthusiastic and his message was very good. And the Maya, you know, board sponsored the books on walking and staying fit, so, yeah, I thought he was very good. I know he was terrific.
Yeah, see, I couldn't stay for his talk because I had to be there. Because Peter Heckenbutner, who's the town manager in Redding, he and I did a workshop.
Right, on selecting...
And so we had to be there on how to hire a town manager.
Town manager, yeah.
Actually, do you know who was there? Like half the Barnstable Town Council.
Was it Jill Goldsmith that she do part of the presentation?
No, it was just Peter. Actually, it was Paul Duretta, Peter Heckenbutner, and Mary Pat Flynn.
Yeah.
Peter, Paul, and Mary.
Oh, that's cool.
Without the music.
Peter's...
I didn't say that, somebody else did.
Peter's the chair of the committee I serve on at MMA. He's a great guy.
He's really, really good. He was on the Maya board back in the 90s when I was back on the Maya board. That's how I know him, yeah. So it worked really well. I thought it was good. It worked great. And for Saturday afternoon with the snow falling, we had a pretty good turnout. We had about 30 people.
Right. Yeah, a lot of people sort of left early.
Yeah.
I know.
Well, there are a lot of towns that are losing their town managers and they're, and they're changing their form of business, their software.
Tom Lunches indicated an interest in keeping the job, I saw in the paper.
Yeah, I read that.
Peter also has a municipal electric utility that's part of Redding. You know that?
Oh, yeah.
You know, Redding has that, you know, that, you know, those two pieces.
I asked Kara to call over to Arts Foundation to see if they're, A, they're stuck in traffic or B, if we had some kind of miscommunication in what's going on.
I think we should just take a little recess until...
Sure, yeah.
Because otherwise we're just going to...
We could stop signing these conversations. I could do that.
But we're running out of days.
Yeah.
No, 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 no.
That's your luxury.
Okay. All right. We are now back in session. We had a short recess. Traffic problems this morning caused problems for some of us. And now we want to welcome Kevin Howard, Executive Director of the Arts Foundation of Cape Cod. And Kevin's going to talk to about some of his budget issues and concerns and the efforts that the Arts Foundation is going to make over the course of the year. So Kevin?
Great.
You have the floor.
Thank you very much. I first off want to start by just reassuring you about what we do here on Cape Cod. And we're very pleased to be the designated regional agency for the arts. We've worked very hard this year to market and support the arts on the Cape and I think there was no better example of that than our recent Fall for the Arts program. I'm going to leave a little handout here on. As you know, this was a program that was started five years ago and was really one weekend worth of activity with some very specific events. We expanded it to an entire month and had over 450 events that were featured over the course of the month. And we were able to partner with the Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce to be able to market off Cape. We had a billboard on the Linway. We had a billboard on the Southeast Expressway. We were able to get print and radio media. So we benefited from bringing people on Cape and extending that tourism season by a month. And also able to do some cross-Cape promotion. As you all know, there are many cultural districts here on the Cape and nothing better than if you live in Hyannis, to take a day trip and go up to Falmouth or go out to Provincetown and enjoy all the many things that there are to do. And we know that this investment in, in the arts really pays back because these people are staying in hotels, they're spending money in restaurants, they're shopping. So it's a good investment when we're able to parlay our arts assets and make it work for the economy. So that, that is a huge part of what we do. We have several other programs that we do. Right now, we're doing our winter art exhibit. This year's theme is Wild Things. There are 2,000 Cape Cod students that are going to go through that exhibit and this up until February 10th. Again, it's, it's a tremendous opportunity to connect Cape artists and our Cape students. For example, we had 175 submissions from Cape artists this year. That's the most that we have ever had. And, and we will put more students through this year than we ever have. So we're really excited and we were able to get some funding to be able to offer bus transportation, to underwrite bus transportation. So I think that's been really important and certainly we've gotten a lot of positive feedback about the exhibit. And if you haven't been there, you should go check it out because it's terrific. In terms of some new initiatives that, that we're working on, we are helping to launch the Chatham Orpheum Theater, which is a new initiative. It was the old CVS on Main Street. And it was originally a theater and then stopped being one about 25 years ago. And there's a restoration project to bring it back. And we are acting as their fiscal agent until they're able to get their own 511(c)(3). We're working with Barnstable Municipal Airport on an arts program there that's multifaceted, not just visual arts, but also an opportunity to use some of the advertising screens when they're not sold to promote arts venues on, on the Cape. And also to celebrate the aviation history of the, of the airport, which is significant.
Is there any, if I could ask, well, two things. I remember when that theater was opened in Chatham and there were, you know, there were reasons for it to close. It was deteriorating and they weren't really showing, you know, a lot of things that people were interested in. But on the, on the, on the airport, I was wondering if there's any thought about a trampolining for the, you know, for the roof of the building to make it look more, let's say, more like a shingled, you know, a shingled building or some, they're not thinking about that?
That's outside of my...
Yeah, that's, that is.
Okay, because I always thought that that was, that you could make a very important statement with regard to the arts if you decorate, if you decorated the building. If you ever go to the Boston Architecture Center, you know, they have that wonderful wall that's on the side of it that, you know, that you say, you're looking at that.
Exterior wall?
The exterior wall that, you know, that, that gives you a sense of what the building, you know, what the building does and what, and what the intent is. So I always thought that that was, you know, that was important as far as, you know, using something in the built environment that actually reflected, you know, something that, of the, of the place. And not just of the building itself, but what the intent of, you know, of it there.
Yeah, mostly what we've looked at are, there's a significant amount of hanging space. So things like mobiles. There's a significant amount of exterior space, so looking at sculptures and the like. So other, other things, but really not anything that is impacting the exterior of the building. So in trying to take a leadership position there, I think it is an opportunity as the gateway to the Cape to really make a statement about the arts. And I think that's where the opportunity is there. I've also started a group, the Creative Collaborative Council, and maybe changing that name. But these are arts leaders from all over the Cape. And we have started to meet and we are working on some initiatives that I think are going to be very exciting. And one that already is on my mission for, for this coming year is to work on an economic impact study for what the arts is doing for the Cape. And specifically what kind of impact the arts is having in terms of the total economy. It's kind of interesting. We met with some representatives from Martha's Vineyard last week and the islands are looking to partner potentially and fall for the arts next year, which is terrific.
Kevin, is there some kind of a grant that you could get to do that study?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm working on that.
You're working on it?
I'm working on it.
Because that would be extremely valuable to have, I think.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because we all know and believe that it's true.
Right.
But to be able to document it would be very, very important.
On the island, it's 5% directly involved in the arts and 14, 14.5% that are the related arts. So, so we're looking at their methodology. I've started to reach out to New England Foundation for the Arts. Mass Cultural Council has their cultural data project. I've met with Leslie Richardson here at the Commission to try to get... And we're, and we're going to do a survey to members. And so we should be able to put some, some good numbers together and be able to make a statement about what, what it is that we're contributing, how many people are employed, and how many people are running through the turnstiles of all these various organizations that we have.
American for the Arts does publish, you know, economic data. You know, that's the, that's the, the one that supports the committee that I'm on at NACO, you know, for that. And they, they will share the information with regard to the county. I think you have to, you know, you have to reduce the data and take a look at, you know, some of the things that they define as being, you know, part of the arts, you know, for... At one time, they were, they were including the owner's video stores, you know, and some of that. So that, you know, while certainly it's part of it, it's not the kind of thing that, you know, that we're looking for.
Yeah, and also, you know, your efforts in partnering with the chamber and doing the advertising off Cape and that sort of thing. You'd have, you'd be able to look at real more quantifiable numbers that, you know, from that effort.
Right.
You know, it might, you know, you say, oh, look, you know, we did have more increased population. Were they there for that? Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking of how, you know, have you ever given people things like if they attend something, like how did you hear about this or...
Well, all of the arts organizations tend to do those kind of things. What, what doesn't exist is a central database.
Exactly.
To be able to say, okay.
Right, where you take all the data and put it in.
What did we learn from this?
What does it mean?
Yeah, right. And of course, the cultural data process, project, which is through the Mass Cultural Council, which now I'm on the board of the Mass Cultural Council. They require all of the organizations to give very extensive data. And, and that data is accessible and it, and it has comparative functions so that you really, you can take a question and really get, get some comparative data and graphs and charts and good presentation materials. So, so we're working on that. That's a really important part of what we're hoping to do for this year. And then have a template so that we can update it on a regular basis. Because most of the information that is available is pretty dated. I mean, I think the Commission did something maybe back in '06 and even New England Foundation for the Arts there was in '09. So it'd be good to have current information. So those are the, those are the other initiatives. One other initiative that we're talking about is perhaps looking at the opportunity to model something like they do with Arts Boston, which is to have a central place where you can buy tickets for everything. And so we were starting to have that conversation. That could be really beneficial to everybody to really have a central location. And, you know, we're the obvious agency to be able to do that. So we're pursuing that as well. Our funding, because this is, I don't know what this is about, right?
Yes. Why you're here.
You were kind enough to support us with $35,000. We had asked for 50. And actually, the request is going to be for 60 this year. And in part for, for a couple of reasons. One is because of these initiatives that we're trying to put forth. We're going to need to probably sub out some resources. Secondly, I don't know if anybody knew this, but it rained last year at Pops.
Yes.
And so we unfortunately did not have the positive impact that a week of sunshine... We didn't even get a week of good weather reports.
Right.
It said it was going to rain.
And it did.
And then it rained. So, you know, fortunately, we were able to do, you know, our sponsors and table sales and all that were very supportive and actually it did lighten enough, lighten up enough that we had a great concert and the people who came really enjoyed it. That's good news. But we just didn't have that bump that we generally have. And I guess that's one of the vulnerabilities that we have in having that be our biggest fundraising event of the year. But we are absolutely convinced that one rainstorm in 25 years, we're good for another 25.
Right.
But for this year, in order for us to be able to continue with our grant-making programs and really do the programs that we've been doing, we're going to need a little more support.
Well, we will certainly take it under advisement. But as you probably know...
You read about us in the paper.
Have you read about us in the paper?
Yeah, so we've had significant shortfalls this year and we don't expect any, any increase in the coming year either. So we're looking at a budget lower than, than what we, than even what we anticipated for this year.
We're going through a little bit of a re-trenchment process.
Well, I guess what I would say on that, and again, because I'm working closely with the agencies, including local chambers, that any money that has been set aside for economic development that really, I hope you look at our organization as in the economic development business. I think the arts, you know, in advance of having specific data certainly does represent a big part of the economy down here. And, and not only that, helps to drive part of the tourism economy. So I think anything that you can do to support us, there is a, there's a return on that investment.
I'm going to suggest that you do use the American for the Arts, you know, economic development data that, you know, that they do, that they generate because in, in advance of getting more specific and targeted information with regard to this specific market, I think that might be a useful way of supporting, you know, let's say, supporting a, an assumption that, you know, that this is a significant contributor to the economic vitality of the Cape.
I mean, the, the formula that certainly Mass Cultural Council has been using pretty consistently is for every dollar invested, there's five returned into the economy. And I think, I think that's probably a strong number based on the research they've done and that similar organizations have done. So, but I, I think that the work that we've been doing this year has been strong. I think the response from being able to collaborate with a lot of agencies from, from the regional chambers to local chambers, you know, working with the Commission to try to get this off the ground, reaching out to the islands to see where there's some opportunity there, launching other organizations that are going to have a similar impact. I mean, one of the things that I've noticed just in the year that I've been here is that these cultural centers that exist, whether it's Catuit or it's the one in South Yarmouth or, you know, even Wellfleet Preservation Hall is a good example. They are making an enormous impact on the communities that they serve because they're getting people to come out and those people are out spending money. And it's, it's really, it lends to the character and certainly the quality of life down here that we have these new exciting places for people to go and showcase the talent that we have in all the arts. But to see the money that is actually being spent, you know, just as an anecdotal aside, in speaking with Mark Huff, who is... in speaking with Mark Huff, who is the executive director at the Wellfleet Harbor Actors Theater, now that they've sort of revised their mission and become more of a cultural center themselves, they're finding they've actually got to reach out to the business community and make sure that places are open to accommodate the people that, you know, they're getting 800 to 1,000 people coming every weekend in November and December, and, you know, okay, where do they go? So, I mean, these are good problems to have. And again, I think that our contribution to the issue of migration is important. I'm sure you all saw the piece on Chronicle, which was not the most exciting piece I've ever seen. But, you know, our ability with Smarter Cape to attract the creative economy, to attract the people who are going to come and do the businesses on broadband, it's very important to those people that there is a strong cultural community around.
Right.
In the same way that it's important to have good schools. So, you know, I feel like we make big contributions to that as well. And I've been involved in the Smarter Cape process and have a sort of a seat at the table there, because I think, again, the more that we integrate, the more chance that we have to take advantage of the opportunity that's going to be presented there.
The cultural center in Yarmouth has impressed me because of a couple of reasons. One, it's in a village center, and that, you know, that there are restaurants that are open year-round, there's a library there, and there's also parking, whereas when you go further afield, you know, there's a cultural center that's represented, doesn't, you know, doesn't have that focus in a, it's a, you know, other things are available without getting your car and leaving, you know, leaving the venue and going someplace else. I notice Howard Schumacher Theater, for example, you know, if you, you know, you can go up and you can, you know, there's a, there's a couple of stores there, but there's no other venue that you can go to other than, you know, other than the theater. So that's, as far as economic development, I wonder if there's any thrust of identifying village centers that might be, you know, might be a focus for, you know, for a cultural center.
Well, I know, you know, Barnstable is looking hard at the Armory as a potential cultural center, so.
They're going to town for different things, yeah.
Yeah, but that might be a perfect.
That would be.
You know, perfect use for that. But the only, the only other thing that I really wanted to say to all of you is that I think you have more of an advantage to tout the support that you're giving to our organization and credit. I know that we put your logo on all of the important things, but.
I love to see that fish.
Yeah, but, you know, I think this is important work that we're doing, and I think that the county has had great vision in seeing what that investment is. And I like to think that your investment in us is something that has a payback. And I know you've got, you know, health and human services issues to deal with and so forth. But at the same time, I think that you want to make smart investments with your money and things that have real return and have an impact on the community. And I think we are one of those agencies that delivers.
And you are our official arts organization on Cape Cod.
Yes, you are.
We designate you as the arts organization in Barnstable County, so we will support you in some fashion.
Right.
And hopefully, to the best we can.
Yes.
As we sort out all of our issues, our financial issues upcoming.
Right.
Are you still enjoying yourself after a year?
Absolutely. Oh, my God, I remember coming here last year.
We just got on the.
I wasn't still sure where the bathroom was, but, no, it's been great.
I was convinced when we went through that search committee stuff that, man.
Well, I think it's been a great fit, and I think it's been an exciting year. Actually, the Winter Art exhibit was the last program that I hadn't had my hands on. And I'm impressed with the work we do because of, between the programs, the outreach to the community, the marketing and promotion that we do. It's gratifying, and I know we get a lot of positive feedback, and we get a lot of people who depend on us being able to get out there and do it, because one of the things that we want to be is the top marketers, certainly for the arts, but for Cape Cod. And that is one area where typically artists and artisans are not, that's not their strong suit. And so the more effective we are at doing that, the more successful they all will be.
And you have a great board of directors.
Always sure do.
I mean, the most committed people to the organization.
Yes, absolutely.
Any organization that I have ever had the privilege of working with.
Yeah.
And I really compliment everyone, and you're going to be very fortunate to.
You know that we switched, so I'm now on the board.
We have to switch because of my retirement board application.
When does the board meet?
It meets on, well, I'll send you the schedule.
Yeah, send me the schedule for the year so I can plug it in.
Because one of the things that we're doing this year, which is really exciting, is every other board meeting now, we're moving to a cultural venue.
Oh, great.
So.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, and so we want to, you know, we are a regional agency, we want to make sure we get around.
I think that's a really good idea.
So.
Could use the courtroom upstairs.
Yeah, you can use the courtroom.
Yeah, swing by the courtroom.
But we've got a pretty energized board right now.
Yeah, really good.
Anything you want to advertise?
That you're doing.
Well, we have the Creative Collaborative Conference that'll be coming up on March 20th, Tuesday, March 20th. Hope you'll all be there. Cape Cod Resort, we are actually going to do it as a day event, and so it'll be starting at eight in the morning. We have lots of exciting speakers that are going to come, and as you know, that's our, sort of our Oscars of the arts. So we'll be giving awards and lots of good panels, all of our Cape delegation will be there, and so it should be an exciting day.
Okay. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you for running that.
We'll be getting back to you within a couple of weeks. We have to, we have to finalize the budget by the 15th.
And you know, we submitted to the assembly.
And then the assembly, yeah, so you're going over there.
So you'll probably be contacted by one of their subcommittees.
Okay.
When they.
Did they ask you to go last year, probably, huh?
Yes, they did.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Good, good, yeah.
We're all.
We're all. Okay, we were returned from our recess, and so we want to welcome our very important people here from Elder Services, and maybe if you would introduce yourselves for the cameras, that would be helpful.
Leslie Share, the executive director.
Deborah Tranfaglia, chief financial officer.
Great, so you have some good information for us today, I'm sure.
Yeah, we'll go over some of the charts.
Good.
We have the basic information that we know you have about the program, but these are our latest charts to show you what's been going on in the last year since we've been here.
So he can put the.
Is there something in back there, Joe?
Just David still, don't pay any attention to him. He's the press.
Don't swear, okay, would you like one?
Yeah, have an.
He loves to get it.
It's a good message.
Barnstable Patriot?
Yeah.
Okay, the first chart here, we have the analysis, a five-year analysis of our meals. We have the home-delivered versus congregate. And as you can see, last fiscal year, which ended June 30th, we have an increase of about 11,000 home-delivered meals, small decline in congregate.
What do you, would you attribute that to, do you think?
The increase in home-delivered.
Oh, the increase in home.
I mean, well, no, the increase in home-delivered meals is, yeah, the aging of the Cape Cod, just the frailty level of people. And then some, some of these folks are on and off, you know, if somebody's having surgery or something, come on and off. And then the senior dining, I think with the senior dining, there's so many choices for people to go to. And some senior dining sites are very well-attended. Barnstable happens to be, you know, there's a lot of people there. In Provincetown, we have so many people that they can't sometimes, there's not enough room. You know, it just, it just depends in what might be going on, where the meal is situated. But, so that kind of, it's like a national trend, too.
Do they give like a dollar contribution or $2 when they go to the sites?
We have a suggested donation of $2.
Of $2.
And because it's a federal program, we can't charge for a meal. And we can't actually go around and ask people and say, did you put money in the, in your envelope?
Do you usually get people who are pretty?
We usually get people contribute, but not, not usually the $2. Some, some people contribute over, some people contribute under. And what's our average?
It's about 86 cents a meal is the average.
In Barnstable County.
That would be the client fees number here, right? The money that you collect. So it's about 215,000 this year, and it says.
That's right.
Is that the same thing?
Right, from the meals, right.
I was going to say how much I enjoyed the opportunity to go out.
And I will do it this year.
Well, you'll get to do that on March, January 1st.
I went to Wellfleet and I was already late.
About 50% of the people that were going on, and some were recovering from an operation.
Right.
Okay, and some were, you know, were basically homebound because of, you know, because of a long-term disability. But it was really wonderful. And what was even better was the enthusiasm and commitment of the regular driver.
Of the drivers.
And because, in my case, it was a husband and wife, you know, that were taking me around, and we went up to a couple of places where, you know, people didn't answer the door right away, and they didn't, they basically got out of the car and they walked around to see, look through the window and the whole thing. It was, it was a remarkable example of people caring about what goes on. And it's not, and as I've always thought, it's not just feeding the body.
Right.
It's the contact.
It's the, yes, the socialization.
You could see that there was a relationship, you know, and I would recommend it to both of you.
I've done it.
Yeah.
People invite us in, we sit down and some houses and just chat for a bit.
Oh, yeah, especially the ones that people you know.
And people you know, of course, and then they know who you are, too, so it's like, they are excited about that. That's why we always say, I mean, it's kind of, you know, say it's more than a meal, but it really is. It's that link to the community, which is probably more important than the meal itself in some instances. But, yeah, but, so that, that just gives you to see what we're doing now. And then already this year, we're serving over what we had anticipated in home-delivered meals already.
And then we have the 192,000 meals that were served. We have the breakdown by town on the next chart.
So you can see Barnstable, obviously, one of the largest towns with all the villages, serve the most meals.
Yes.
Felt with his high.
And Dennis compares without it, that's interesting, almost.
Dennis is a very large congregate, senior dining site also. There's a lot of, a lot of meals being served in Dennis as well.
Yes.
And just, you know, like Wellfleet and Truro, too, they're smaller towns, but lots of meals out there.
And then the next chart talks about the unduplicated client consumer count by town. So you can see in Barnstable, we serve 450 residents and so forth. And again, Dennis, 269.
Yeah, and some of, some people, just to remind you about Meals on Wheels, we have a capacity to have meals seven days a week. If you want weekend meals, they come out on Friday, and they come out frozen, and then folks cook them on the weekend whenever they, they need to. Some people get meals seven days, some get five, some people might have a few days that their family member may go to a day care center, so they only need the meal like once a week, or whatever, whatever it is. It really is based on the consumer needs. And we have a care manager that goes out and talks to the potential person, and then every three months, so.
I guess the big takeaway for me is that we're talking about feeding people that we know. It's not, you know, they are not anonymous, they're part of our community, they're part of us.
And now we, because obviously the aging of the Cape, we have people who used to be volunteers for us.
And now they're.
Or people who used to work for us or, you know, anywhere, but were known to us via that way, but a lot of volunteers now. A lot of our volunteers in certain areas of the Cape are having some problems getting volunteers to serve the meals, because a lot of people who volunteered before are now, you know, getting to the point where they are not comfortable in driving or going out and delivering the meal, particularly in the winter, and then, yeah.
Some of us are very concerned about driving at night as time goes on.
Right.
Especially when it's raining.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So we do a lot of partner groups with a lot of, you know, differently, the Rotary Clubs and a couple banks. And we try to do that with some local businesses and trying to do that more and more. So then that group, like the Rotary Club, they have a team of people, so the Rotary member may only serve meals, maybe once or twice a month, but it, that, that route is consistently covered for us. Did you happen to see Chronicle on January 18?
I did not see it. I do. We knew some of the older population there.
We, I had.
Were you on it?
Yeah, I personally wasn't on it. We had, I talked to the producer for quite some time about the whole topic, and they profiled two Meals on Wheels, a couple Meals on Wheels, and they were from one of the Rotary partnerships delivering the meal.
If you want, if you want some more television exposure, I'd be happy to have you on my program.
On the, on the Harwich TV station.
No, no, actually, it's on Channel 17.
Oh, Channel 17, yeah. I'll go with you very fast. You look like you want to.
You have the middle, you have the whole middle of the Cape.
That's right, we were just on Sandwich, and, yeah, you know, we, any opportunity to go on and talk about, whether it's meals or just our general agency programs, we usually do that.
Excuse me, how would people in the general public contact you for this information?
For, to, to have.
Either sign up for meals or?
I can put, if you want to, put the.
Volunteers.
The brochure. They can call our South Dennis office, see the directory, and then it has all of our, just put it up with all the numbers there.
Terrific.
Yeah. But if somebody wanted to volunteer, they can call the South Dennis office directly. Or if they happen to live in Barnstable and they're at the Barnstable Senior Center, they can just go right into the site and talk to our site manager, and then she'll link them up. All of our volunteers have to be queried, they go through a little bit of a training and the procedures, so it's done. You can, you can talk to someone locally, wherever you are, but then in the South Dennis office is where our volunteer coordinator is. So we welcome volunteers.
It seems to me that there's less towns contributing, is there?
You're already on the.
Yeah, we haven't gotten.
You're already on one.
I'm already there.
Okay, would you like us to go, do you want to just go over this quickly?
Yeah, let's go to the next graph.
Oh, okay. This is, talks about where the budget.
This is the, the last graph shows our revenue and broken down by percentage where it comes from. And the biggest piece, again, is, you know, federal and state money, that's 37% of our revenue. We do get, 9% of our revenue is the client fees that we had talked about earlier, that's the dollar donation, the $2 donations. Towns and counties money is about 8% of our revenue. We do have 11% shortfall in the program, and we try to narrow that gap with fundraising, and some of our other programs that provide a surplus contribute to that shortfall.
That's why we don't have to do the, you know, you never want a waitlist, Meals on Wheels. Yeah, no, you know, so we just do what everyone else does, try to make up the shortfall. So you, here's the.
According to my calculations, there's like 77,000 people plus meals that go on, without the contributions, there's, that's what the towns that don't, that's how many people are served in that collective body of towns. Did they used to contribute, and it's just a matter of budget priorities?
Well, and I'll let Deb speak to some of the, something, but no one, no town is mandated to fund us, you know, this is.
And you can't go in there and say.
Yes, we will not serve meals if you don't.
Right.
Contribute to us.
There's the county that cares.
Yeah, yeah. So, so that said, each town, if we go and apply through human services committees or whatever their mechanism is, and some towns fund you and some towns don't, it depends upon the town. But Deb, do you want to talk a little more about?
We've seen some funding decline, decreases, but I haven't seen a town just drop funding us.
Right, either they never did.
Just never.
They just never picked up the.
Right.
The affair, yeah.
We have a reduction in the town of Yarmouth, and that's through, do you want to speak to that, the CD, the grant?
The town of Yarmouth, we had budgeted for 20,000, as you see here, but we just recently were notified that they get their funding for us through a CDBG grant. They're actually going to be giving us close to 14,000 this year. But they've been, they've been good. But they've been, they've been good. They did suggest that towards the end of the fiscal year, if they have any excess funds, that they will try and supplement that decrease. And in previous years, they have done that, they have given me a call and say, hey, we have some excess funds, can you know, send me an invoice. And, you know, last year, for example, we did get an extra twenty-three hundred dollars from them, so.
That's good.
Yeah, that's good.
And it's nice that they follow through on their promise, so.
And some money comes from the Friends groups off of the Council on Aging, so.
Isn't there a contribution in kind from some of the community centers? I know that Harwich provides some, you know, some kitchen space, right?
Right, they provide the kitchen space and we pay a nominal amount of money a month towards electricity.
So it's...
So it's kind of...
A little washing.
Right, but if we had to pay rent, you know, in certain, like in Orleans, we're not in a, in a council on aging, we're in a church and the church doesn't, you know, charge us to be there. You know, things like that, some, some towns don't. Barnstable used to do a charge for us and they don't in the last, what, like, four years or so. Again, the charge was nominal, you know, it's usually to offset electricity. And their COA directors on our board, so it's very favorable.
What space do you use in Barnstable?
We use the Council on Aging.
Oh, the Council on Aging, that's a good space.
Yeah, we're generally in Council on Aging buildings except in Bourne, where Meals on Wheels come out of our own office and thanks to the county, it's your office, but we're there with no rent, which is, we moved, when we, when we had to do something in the town of Bourne, we moved it into, and it's worked out. The Meals on Wheels go out there. In Falmouth, we're in the housing, housing building. In Sandwich, we're in a housing complex, so we're not always in a council on aging or a community center. One thing that, that we'll tell you about because I'm sure that you can't remember what we said last year, obviously, but we did enter into doing a golf tournament last year for the first time, which was a challenge because I, we don't, don't have a development director, so Deb, myself and lots of good staff and people in the community helped us with that. And so we had a golf tournament in October, which was very successful. So, yeah, much, you know...
To your surprise.
Yes, I must say, much to my surprise, but we had a lot of good support in that and we're gonna go ahead and do it again.
Do it again this year.
And that's, you know, ways to obviously make up the shortfall.
Right, and that will pick up as people get to, you know, realize that you're, that you're doing that type of fundraiser.
And just do it, yeah.
Yeah, that's really good.
Much larger shortfall projected for this coming year.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, it's like everybody, like ourselves, everybody, yeah. It's, you know, where the funding is coming from and this is a combination of state and federal funding and, you know, that's, those funds are tight on the federal level in particular. So, yeah, that's a shortfall. Now, do you want to say anything else or...
Well, the food cost obviously was, it has been creeping up.
Right, I imagine.
You say the per unit cost for food is, what, eighty-six cents?
No, that's what they make on a meal.
That's what they donate.
What is the, what is the cost per meal average?
Yeah.
Cost per meal, and the cost per meal, the actual meal or if you include all of our costs, our payroll costs and all of that, that's, that's about eight dollars and sixty cents when you include all costs.
All of the overhead and overhead, okay.
Yeah, it's a costly program to run because, and we're so spread out. And to have, you know, it's, we've looked numerous times through the years if we did a central location for Meals on Wheels or if we did, you know, however to do it, but because of the geographic, you know, it's such a widespread that if all the meals came out of Barnstable, we'd have nobody, no volunteers that would be serving the upper or lower, the lower Cape. You know, so it's, it's very difficult, so. And we're, we do, we couldn't operate the program without volunteers. And I know a lot of people say that, but it's absolutely true in our case. The meals would not go out the door if it were not for the volunteers.
And you have a, you have a steady, steady army of volunteers?
Hundreds.
Good, okay, that's good, okay, so you don't...
Last year, that's...
I'm glad that's not a shortfall.
...a report, so if you have an extra one week to get it through.
The annual report, it's, yeah, it's actually on the other side and at, our volunteers, we have about twelve-hundred or so.
And what day is the visiting, you have the lunch...
March for, Mayor's for Meals or County Commissioners for Meals.
Right.
I believe it is March twenty-first and invitations will be going out shortly.
Okay, I'm already signing up for Wellfleet because Dale Donovan beat me to it the last time. It was already taken in Wellfleet, in all my local town, I mean, everybody's already signed up, but I was like, okay, I kind of get up to the other class to come back.
I will tell that, we'll let you go and...
I'm already in.
In Wellfleet, yeah, the more the merrier.
I'm gonna beat them.
It's kind of a fun event and actually because it's part of a national event, because that happens all over, the National Meals on Wheels gives out grants and so when, we had a very high participation and so we were awarded the gold grant, which was, how much should we get, about twenty-five hundred dollars?
Oh, so if you get it for Meals on Wheels to participate?
And, 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 you know, that was something that we weren't even kind of aware of, we were just doing it because we wanted to do it and because they, we had a high participation and, you know, so that was good.
We have to get Will, Will, get the word out, see if everybody will sign up, so.
Plus, it's just people like to do it, you know, so.
It's great fun.
And we take obviously more than just Mayor's.
Right, of course.
Since we have no Mayor's, we take, you know, it's a fun thing to do. Did you have a question on the, I thought you were asking a question?
No, 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 I'm just, it's just interesting.
You do such a great job.
You do a great job and it's unfortunate that it's, you feel such stress, yeah.
Trying to...
Now, your meals are still, you were, were you going off Cape for the meals? I mean, I knew that there was, you still do, you had to, I mean, it was just...
Yeah, no one, no one did on the, on the Cape.
Yeah, because it's just too much.
So, all the, all the bids were off Cape entities, so we're still with City Fresh.
City Fresh, yeah.
And they're in Dorchester.
Oh, in Dorchester.
Or Rexbury, do they move to their, yeah, it's right on the line.
On board.
Yeah, it's a, it's a family-owned business, they're very interested, they come down.
Milking?
No, City Fresh.
Yeah, where is it, Dorchester?
What street, I'm not sure what street there is, I mean...
You should say what parish or...
Yeah, yeah, but it's a, and City Fresh with the name, City Fresh on there, they have introduced a lot of fresh and organic vegetables and frozen things, which some people love and other people want that, you know, the pears and heavy syrup, you know, which you can't have, you know, you can't have any longer, but, but they have, even though they're off Cape, they do have ties to this area, so they are very entrusted and it's been a really good association with them. But our, it goes out to bid for three years and then you have an additional two years that we can continue the contract. And we are in the, just, we are in the third year with them, so. People seem to enjoy the meals and what they have. So, obviously, we are appreciative of any support that you can give us and we are very much aware of what you have to contend with, so we're, we feel fortunate that we're even sitting at the table here and, and, you know, and hopefully that you will consider, you know, funding us and...
We will, we just don't know. I guess, I don't know if it was a good thing or a bad thing, the Cape was put on the front page, but at least it pranked everyone.
Well, first I say right, because I live in Barnstable, so I read the Barnstable Patriot and when the first article came out, I was like, oh no, we're seeing them next week, and then every day, what we're talking about, it was on the radio this morning, we're like...
I know, I heard it on the radio too.
Yeah, but, but everyone is faced with that and you're no different.
And we're always struggling with it, yeah.
You have far more to fund than just us.
Our turn came later. The towns started dealing with this three or four years ago and now, we did last year bid or the year before, but now it's, we're coming into the more difficult time. And the towns, some of them are really beginning to emerge a little bit better than they have.
But we're focusing on what we can do.
Rather than what you can't do, and that's always the better way to do it.
Right.
Right, yeah, that's how we try to look at it too, if we can. You know, with the state, we have a lot of funding for our home care program, which provides meals also to those folks. And we had a waitlist last year and we're expecting to hear about a waitlist again for, and so when people go on a waitlist for those, that type of service, Meals on Wheels is something that you always at least want to have in the house, you know, because it's the contact and to see what's going on, why people are waiting for other services. But right now, we're open for, for all services and, you know, Meals on Wheels is something, as we said before, we would never waitlist.
Because it's a concern that I have about public transportation. The RTA has been very concerned about reaching out to elderly populations. I know that there've been several conferences where, where we've appeared at and I'm just wondering as to whether or not you're seeing any, any sense that, that the elders are aware that we're adding fixed routes in order to provide, you know, let's say, a better level of alternative, you know, personal transportation.
Yeah, I think, you know, we've been involved in a lot of those, those meetings as well and Paula George is, she's on our Board of Directors, she's president of our Board of Directors.
Oh, she is?
Yeah, so, I mean, our board is aware of different things and I think the RTA has done a really good job in trying to get that word out about all those fixed rates and, and we try to tell our consumers those that aren't homebound. And I think that there's a lot of information at the COAs and people out. I think people are looking at public transportation a little more closely than they did before. You know, still a lot with older individuals to get on the bus, the Dart and have to wait and, you know, they want to be picked up at the door and just go where they want to go and back. But I know the RTA is trying to work really hard with that population to try to solve some of those issues of more personalized transportation and I think they've, they've been fairly successful in doing that, so. So we've been involved with that, trying to get that word out to, to do that, but...
Excellent.
Thank you so much, thank you so much.
Enjoy having you.
Good work.
And I'll call you.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, we'll, we'll come on and...
Yes.
Tell everybody, all the more people about the great...
That's right, yeah.
Right.
No, anytime. Thank you very much.
Thanks, lovely.
And thank you again for the use of the building in a county because that's, that's helped us with just our rent.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, we were just talking about that the other day because of having, looking at what would we have to pay if we didn't have that building, so that's another thing. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, thank you so much, good to see you.
Good to see you too.
Bye-bye.
Hi.
Tape change before we start to...
Yeah, sure. You're gonna do it? Mark likes your numbers?
Yeah, the half of your number is pretty good.
The video number is actually, the revenue is a little higher than what last year. The county services is a little down, though we expect that to roll over.
Do you want to introduce this?
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to begin our discussion, so we're going to ask you to introduce yourselves, the gentlemen from the Fire Training Academy.
Yes, ma'am, I'm Lee Parisel, Director of the Fire Academy.
And Mark Foley, Deputy Director.
So.
So good.
Okay, so, the media report, real quick, like, just that, the revenues generated first half of the year are up a little over last year. The county services are down a little bit. I would expect that in the second half of the year that will flop over and county services will go up, revenues will drop down a little bit or stay level. Not exactly sure where that's going to go, it may go up drastically, it may not. Still some things in negotiations, so we're not sure exactly where that will go. But we should be about exactly where we were last year, all the way across the board, the end of the year, beginning of the year, should be about the same or better. I won't guarantee better, but the budget that we have submitted this year is level funded, minus, I think, about eight-hundred dollars on line item expenses that I was able to reduce. So, I guess, I guess that's where we are, we're just level funded, we gave you a level funded from last year and from the year before and the year before, so that's three years in row of level funded.
I guess the question that always comes up is how do we get the departments on the Cape to use your services to, let's say, to use more of your services as opposed to sending, you know, their members up to, you know, up to Nader? Or is it Stowe or...
Stowe.
Stowe, okay. I always remember going by there when we lived up that way, through the Apple Moms, but, because it never makes too much, never makes sense to me in terms of, if you're looking to save money and you're looking to get high-quality training, it's all available here and, and it's like, it always appears to be, to be an unnecessary expense and when we look at, you know, how can we help the community, you know, not change the relationship of their, you know, of the public safety personnel with the community, but take a look at how we can advise them and support them for, let's say, for training opportunities that are less expensive. Do you have any strategy that we can use to...
They're all, they're all aware of everything we have and they, they use us for everything other than some departments mandate recruit training at Stowe.
Now, what way is that?
That's union contracts.
Union contracts?
Basically, union contracts, or the towns themselves have decided that they prefer their students to go to a thirteen-week or fourteen-week, whatever it is now, five-day-a-week program rather than through our recruit program, which is two nights and, two nights a week and all day Saturday, covering the same material in a more jammed-in fashion, if you will, with a little less hands-on work that gives them the same accreditation at the end. We just started a class Monday night with twenty-three students again this year. And that takes the lower Cape, that takes the departments that have call and volunteer firefighters, so it's from Province Town all the way through, too, we have some from all over the place, those that still have call firefighters. They take, they use us and then what happens is sometimes those people get on the job full-time and some of the towns that they get on mandate that they go to recruit training again and they go to it all over again.
My good friend Roy Jones, you know, who did that study down in, you know, for the Lower Cape, you know, hit on what I think is very important is that you have to maintain a professional competence level with your force.
By using us, that's what they do.
Yeah.
Those departments who choose not to spend the money or do not have the money to send people to Stowe, they come to us and we train all their call people to the same level that the, same basic level that the paid professional firefighters are being trained to at that level. And once they get that certification from the state, they now can take other courses from the state. They can go to instructors courses or professional development courses or whatever through the state. Without that certification, they cannot. So our certification, which is given by the state because they actually do the final testing, is equivalent in their minds to their recruit training program. So all of the students that are on the Cape or all the firefighters on the Cape are aware that they can take courses from us or from them and we have fire officer class we're doing now, we have a fire instructor class we're doing now, and those are all Cape people that are taking those, rather than go all the way to Stowe, they're coming to us. They'll get the same certification, they take the state exam at the end, they get the same certification.
So taking your course, they just have to go and take the exam, they don't have to go up for their training? So they'll probably, but the exam is taken here, so everything is taken here. So once they're accredited here, are they looked at as a professional or that status has to be given through...
They're looking, they're looked at as all firefighters are as in the state, well, shouldn't say all, most firefighters in the state as being trained to the level of firefighter one-two.
Right.
Basic recruit train level, and there's more steps they can go after that. But their, their training certificates, if you will, are equivalent to anybody who goes to the recruit training program at Stowe.
It's a pro-board certification, like any other pro-board certification. You, you take the curriculum, doesn't matter where you get the curriculum, then you test at the state level with the pro-board firefighting or any other discipline that uses a pro-board certification. That's, that's essentially what it is.
So that has to go, so they have to go before them?
Yes.
So that's just a given, no matter what?
Well, you don't have to do it, but then you're not pro-board certified.
Right, which affects you as being, your status on...
It's accreditation.
Right.
It affects you for being able to, the state academies, rules and regulations and guidelines and SOPs are that if you don't have that basic accreditation, you can't, you can't take any more of their more advanced courses.
I see.
So you have to get that pro-board, whether it's a course through us or a course through them.
Right.
You have to get that basic training somewhere or you can't ever take another course legitimate, a legitimate course and get a certification for it.
So, so what you do is we sort of give, you know, professional updating or refresher courses and, you know, that sort of thing to professionals here and also it's a real good recruiting tool for, for other fire, you know, local people who want to become firefighters.
Yeah, and the answer to Bill's question really is, is a money issue. It's, training is the first thing that gets cut in the fire department budgets. And as we all know, budget's been tight.
Right.
So the training dollars are not there in any of the Cape department.
And to me, what we're, what we're offering is a pathway to provide the same high level of performance and competence at a reduced cost and...
But even at that reduced cost, there's still people who can't attend or towns that can't support people to attend because they have zero dollars to do anything.
So it's not necessarily that they lean more on you, it's just that they don't do anything.
Not doing anything, because they don't have those.
So they're hiring, they're not sending, they're not re-upping their, they're not doing their annual trainings.
Do you think if, if the firefighters themselves were not bound by their contracts, that they would be more inclined to want to go to you guys than to go to Stowe?
That's only the, that's only the one particular course, that's the recruitment. That's only the, that's only the one particular course, that's the recruit class.
Everything else is open, and people come off Cape and pay tuition to come to our classes.
So it goes both ways, but the bottom problem is, it's not that we don't offer the classes or they aren't available here or anywhere else, the problem is folks from the towns can't attend because they aren't supported by the towns to attend in terms of either overtime, backfill, time off, all of those problems that they can't attend or don't attend. It's not, it's not a problem of supply of courses, it's a problem of financing the attendance to the courses, which we...
And if an individual wanted to come forward and said, "I'm not tied to any fire department right now, but I want to go through this," they could, they could just come to you and...
No, they can not.
They have to be associated with the fire department.
They have to be signed up by a fire chief that they...
I was just wondering.
Yeah.
I, I carried a card in the IBW, and I'm not against, certainly in support of unions because I think they have a place. At the same time, I think unions have the responsibility to take a look at, how can they protect the overall, you know, the overall picture with regard to their, you know, the people they're representing in terms of these shortfalls and, same budgets within the town? And I think it's time for the unions to, you know, to look at that and take some responsibility as far as, you know, what they're negotiating for.
And many of them do support people to go either trading for monies from associations or from the union themselves, so there is some of that. There's, it's not a, it's not a strict wall.
I believe he retired, the fire chief is escaping, but he was working on that portion of the contract to see if there could be some sort of language, just a couple of years ago. What am I thinking of? Was he, he wasn't from Eastham?
We've had, no, not from Eastham, but we've had a number of chiefs retire recently.
I know. Oh.
Not quite sure.
And I know, I'm blocking his name, but, but I guess, I mean, I know that that's been attempted, you know, there's always some of the, you know, tries to do the charge, but it never seems to get through.
Well, it's, it's as here and anywhere else, wells down to dollars, and dollars just aren't there. They can barely support the operation of the department to maintain what they have, then you overlay the training dollars, which, which is another burden that they just, most of them can't sustain right now. So they go to other sources, they go to grant money, there's been lots of grant money that's been, been got at the Homeland Security level through the state or wherever. We've done some of those trainings for folks, that does exist, but that's kind of hit or miss, you never know if you're going to get it, and there's, there's always attachments to that. I'll give you one example, just recently, Cape-wide regionally, we secured a grant from Homeland Security for three-quarters of a million dollars' worth of technical rescue equipment and the training to go along with the equipment. The training's going to be delivered by Mass Fire Academy staff, but it's going to be delivered in our, in our academy. So, we're going to get a piece of that cost, so we will get some revenue out of that, so that's a good thing. There'll be 48 firefighters trained up to technical rescue levels of training and three-quarters of a million dollars' worth of equipment that certainly the towns would not have been able to acquire without that grant. So there's one example of, of how the towns, the unions, and us are working cooperatively.
And you still do take your programs to the stations as well?
Oh, yes. Yep, yep, yep. And that's, and that's one way that the, that the towns do get around kind of, you know, get the most bang for their buck in their training dollars, is when we can go to the station and do it on duty or on shift or that kind of thing. That helps a lot, because now they're not taking people off, off duty, off the floor.
Is there, is there a fee for that?
We don't charge it.
You don't charge a fee for that?
If any of the...
And they don't have a cost of the overtime?
Right.
If some of the Lower Cape towns decided to go to full-time or permanent firefighters rather than call, would that make a difference? Would that have an impact on your training or require more training or something?
Well, you would theoretically guess.
Yeah, you would, yeah.
Yes. But they are, the Lower Cape towns now are using us for their recruit training. You know, we're in this class now, we have problems down, this time we don't have anybody control of, well, either Eastham we have in the past. So they get their recruit training, they choose to do it that way rather than go through the state, so we've been, been, you know, real active with the Lower Cape especially because they are the smaller departments, and they are, they're extremely fund-deficitant, if you're going to say.
I can imagine.
And Province Town has, has turned around into one of our, our biggest, not the biggest supporters, but one of our larger users of our outreach programs. We go down there once or twice a month.
Yeah, I know.
And we're doing their, basically doing their training for them because they have no way of doing it.
Right.
And the chief really wants to bring their level of competence up.
Right.
From, from the recruits that come in, that have been coming in for a few years, that are way ahead of those who've been there for a long time, he's trying to, he's trying to level them all up. And it's working, it's working.
No, I know, I know the outer Cape...
John, you have a question? John, over to you.
Everybody uses...
Somebody have delegates?
Yeah, hi.
Hi, John.
Sorry, I'm a little late.
That's okay.
But, yeah.
Not late enough.
I have a lot of questions, but one of them is, is revenues generated for mid-year, according to your numbers here, says $68,890. That's not actual dollars, that's services rendered?
No, that's actual dollars we took in.
Well, in, in the kind of report that was here two weeks ago, says through the midway point that you've received $3,550, and that's a dramatic difference.
That's because none of the checks had come in when we did that report.
Right, and all the numbers, that's why they're...
Okay, so you've...
We have all those, that, that number was, was the number that we had received at the point we generated that, your report from last fiscal year.
So that's actual cash?
There's $68,000 some odd dollars, it's actual cash that have been paid.
And I kind of summed up the rest of it, the dollar value would add, if you added those up, that would be the 87 to 90.
Right.
Correct. The dollar, the other one is the county services that we have done up until December 31st, in-kind services that we do not charge the Cape departments for.
And again, I think you were answering the question, and I forgive me for asking that. The reason that, that some of the bigger towns or any town that wants to go to, up to Stowe as opposed to us is because of the union contracts?
In terms of...
In other words, why, why would, if every town, and I believe this, every town budget and every fire department budget is strained to the max, why would anyone go to Stowe?
The recruit class, the 14-week recruit class is the one that they are constrained by contracts to attend the Mass State Fire Academy.
They must go there.
By some of them, some of them, not all.
Well, how is that determined?
By the union contracts.
Yeah, it is by contract.
So the individual towns...
It's a negotiated contract between the union and the town that has decided at whatever point that, that going to Stowe for recruit training, the 14-week full-time recruit training course is the way that they wished to train their incoming firefighters.
And I can tell you from history, one town, my town from Yarmouth, that that started in 1975, when I got hired, I was in the first recruit class from Cape Cod to go to Stowe. And the reason that the union negotiated that at that time was because there was no basic standard training available anywhere else other than the Mass Fire Academy, who had only recently started that program too in the early 70s. And the larger Cape departments decided that they wanted to be, become more professional, and all their people coming on the job would be at least trained to a certain basic level. And that's when all those contracts with the bigger departments were signed, generally in the early 70s, mid-70s.
But these are periodically revisited by selectmen and...
When they negotiate a contract.
Every three years?
Every two or three years or one year, depending on how they negotiate their contracts.
I guess my question is, are the boards of selectmen aware that, that this is a potential place where they could give some budget relief to the town? Are they aware of this, that from 1975 to now, I mean...
Well, you'd assume that most of the boards are quite aware of the union contracts that they engage in.
Once you have something in a contract, it's very difficult to get it out.
Well, it costs.
You bargain it out.
If I'm looking at the towns and the number of students, those that have zero are usually the towns that aren't participating?
For this particular...
Of this particular report, okay. Okay, so that doesn't mean that they've never participated.
No, no, no. It means they didn't during the last six months.
During this, that reporting period.
What, do we know the towns that have that negotiated into their contract?
But you're really focusing on one class.
I agree, I agree, and I'm only talking about that class. I'm not talking about the ongoing training that you do for these to...
Could we name the ones who go to Stowe?
I'm not asking you to, but you know what they are.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah. You know exactly.
But, and, and there are many, many other reasons other than it just being a negotiation. There are many other concerns of, considerations why someone would go to there for the recruit training versus us.
And that's a town-by-town decision, the fire chief?
And quite frankly, if, if they all decided tomorrow that they were all going to use us...
Yeah.
We probably couldn't do it.
Right.
Because we don't have the dollar funding to, to produce the class for that amount of students. So there'd be, there would be a discussion here about whether we could even do that, so...
Well, not only that, it would, in theory, displace some of the revenue generating things. So you have to sort of separate some of these discussions because there's a little bit of cross-purposes going here. On the one hand, we want to serve the Cape towns, and we want to do all of the training for the Cape towns, but that then results in lower revenues, not higher, because you don't charge them.
Exactly.
So if the tug is to do more revenue generation, then you do less with the Cape towns and more with people who pay, which is off Cape theoretically, so...
And there's one other concern here, too, and our mission is to, is part of it, is to fill the void that the Mass Fire Academy cannot produce or do. And one of those voids is they do not do recruit training for non-full-time firefighters. We fill that void.
Right.
So, these 23 students that we took in Monday evening would have nowhere to go to get that training if we weren't providing it. So that's a void that we fill, and it, while Mass Fire Academy is filling a void for the full-time recruits.
Right.
So there's all of those kinds of questions.
Now, that's an important point, yeah.
It's not quite as simple as it sounds when you say it and...
Yeah, so without something like this on the Cape, there really isn't an open door for someone who wants to pursue a career in firefighting.
No, we are, and this is the first thing we've explained to the recruits, that they are, they are so fortunate to have the academy in place here, to have the support of the county, support of the chief, support of the towns. If they lived over the bridge, they would not have this opportunity, and they, they would have to find it some other method, and it's very, very, very difficult.
Right.
You have to get the job first, basically, pretty much.
You have to get hired, right. And you know how that goes.
Right, so there's a whole other problem. So it really, it really is a unique program that, that we are unique, we are a unique regional fire academy in the state, they don't exist anywhere else these days, and we're proud of that and proud of the support everybody gives us for that. And without it, it would be a huge, huge hole for these departments. Those 23 students would have nowhere to go for this particular training, and these towns who need them to run their departments would have nowhere to go to get that training, they'd have to contract it out at a very, very huge cost.
Right. No, I get it.
Yep.
And now, we can change discussion.
Yeah.
Mass Maritime Academy, we received a call this morning, that we are a goal.
Oh, good.
We are a goal with the Mass Maritime Academy. So, having said that, we're level-funded, which means we will try next year to fit that program in under the funding we have, which may mean that we will have to diminish our county services a tad, reduce that a little bit, to do that program under the level funding that we issued to you today.
So can you just briefly tell us about the MMA...
So you are going to be doing the training this year?
We're going, as, after July 1st, which means our first contact with the students will be in the end of August for their Hell Week, when they bring the new, the new...
Freshman.
Plebes, whatever you want to call them.
Yes, right.
So that will be our contact. We, we're going to sit down with him on Wednesday, the 4th, and do a little bit of beginning negotiating contracts and prices and see what they want, what we want, and we're going to start working on that, and they've got to finish their contract with the state between now and July, and then we will take it over as of July 1st.
So will most of them be coming to you as of you going to them?
Be some of both.
Some of both.
Some will come to us, some we have to go with the, down to the academy to...
They're going to have to go on ships?
Well, that's one critical element that was missing in, in the former contract that they had, that was not part of the contract where they had actual ship-time training.
Right.
And we can provide that.
Right, that's why we talked...
Right, so there will be shipboard training provided by us to them under the contract, which is, which is a huge advantage for them.
Right, excellent, excellent, good.
They'll be able to use their own vessels, so that's, that's going to work, and we're happy that's finally come around after, after trying for 20 years to get...
Yep, yep.
That's a great alliance.
It is.
The numbers should look good.
They have a, they have a chief financial officer that gets it, so...
Yes, I know.
It's unfortunate that a state agency and a state agency couldn't come to terms, but we're happy to...
It's okay for us.
We're happy to fill the void.
I was happy to, that's good.
All right, well, good luck with that.
The only, having said that, the only issue may arise in, with the level-funded budget is the firefighting material.
Right.
They use a lot of gas. If the cost of our propane goes sky-high and I can't move enough funds around, little dollars here, little dollars here to cover that, we may have to sometime come back and look for an increase in that one line. That's the one that I would be most afraid of.
Yeah.
Because, you know, fill that tank one time and you're talking, right now, $1,600, and you've got to do that two or three times.
Right.
You know, you're talking right over my budget already.
Right.
We'll see. We'll, we'll play with the numbers we have if we can get the numbers that we have.
We're all hoping that the way we craft this, that there will be opportunities for you to come back.
Yeah.
And I think we have an issue with that.
He didn't bat an eye, so...
They've all...
Yeah, we'll figure that out.
Not for money, not for paying customers.
That's right, yeah, I know. That's exactly right.
So, I guess that's where we sit. We're looking to level funding with some increases in revenue.
Yeah. You provide a very valuable service to the fire departments on the Cape and elsewhere, and we really appreciate it.
Oh, and for your edifice...
Yes.
For the first time ever, we've been doing mask fitting for all the departments on the Cape for a long, long time, except Falmouth.
Of course.
They are now on board. We are now in Falmouth.
You have a new chief.
Yes.
Hooray. He's a great collaborator.
Very, very nice new relationship.
Yes, that's wonderful.
Now, we have a much better relationship with the Falmouth Fire Department, they're becoming more involved.
That's great.
It's a good thing.
I'm very happy to hear that. I do my part on my end.
All right, well, you've, as I say, you've read the paper, so everybody's trying before they get in, but, you know, we're doing what we can do.
Are you okay?
I gotta say, every time, my only, from an uninformed point of view, my only problem is that union contracts, it drives me out of my mind that we can't do more for the, for the towns in Cape Cod, which is our, we're looking to regionalize everything we can. Here we've got a regional program that works, and by contract, some of them can't attend. Is there anything else that you see on the horizon? That's a great alliance with Mass Maritime. Do you see any of the old business coming back in the near future, or the nearer Cape towns that can put a dollar number to us?
For dollars to us?
Yes.
The only possibility of that is, that I see right now is the grants, that some of the towns have put in requests for grant monies, and if they get grant monies, we're telling them to make sure they put a piece of money in that grant to pay us for the training. And, we've done that, we did that with Chatham once, and we actually sent them a bill for $5,000, because that was in the grant, you know, they paid us, and, so as departments may get grants, if they loosen up or free up, we may get some revenue generated. If some of the plants, the, some of the coal-fired plants, or some of the oil-fired plants and stuff come back online, we may be able to get into some of that training that we do for the nuclear power plant, possibly, you know...
And you don't have any ability to go into the emergency training, the stuff that Sean O'Brien does? There's no connectivity there, or you could expand in a, in a different venue?
Well, we already, we already do a lot of that. We're doing all the ICS classes and stuff in conjunction with Sean.
We've done the majority of the county, that, again, at little cost to the county, if the county had to go out and purchase that training, there'd be a substantial bill, and really, they mandated to have it, so, it would be a substantial bill for all the departments, not just the fireside.
You know, I wonder, Pat, if there's an opportunity with Maya, you know how Maya does, like confined space entry training, where they do, I don't even know what else. But maybe I should have Jeff Sienna come out and kind of just walk around the fire training academy and see, this is what we do, this is what we can do, these are the props we have, maybe there's something that we can do.
Maya can do on a support basis.
Yeah, and they can, Maya could contract with you guys, and you have just people from southeast Massachusetts come down and blah blah.
We have, we have had that conversation, at a low level, at a low level.
Because many of the towns on the Cape are Maya communities, meaning they have their workers comp with property casualty with Maya.
And we have done some work with Maya on that level, with some confines, some stuff up in Falmouth we've done, actually, and some other, some other smaller jobs, but yes.
That would be great. The other thing I was thinking at the next Cape Cod Selectman Counselors' meeting, as a representative county government can talk about a bit about the fire program, and just mention to them the services that you have, and that when they're negotiating their union contracts, they should be aware of the fact that, that we can bring it up at the Selectman Counselors' meeting.
Yeah, maybe they'll have you come and talk. So you could hit them all at once, and have them understand the way it works with them.
To get you on a program where you can actually, of course, all the contracts, they all, you know, they're all, all end usually June 30th, but they don't all expire at the same years, so everybody's probably all over the map, but, but when you do, if, if their contracts don't end this year, there's always next year. So maybe it would be a good idea, we can talk to, who's the new president, Austin? To have you come and...
Hi, Austin.
Presentation.
So we'll talk to him.
Yes, and that would be good.
Yeah, so we'll...
That's the next one.
Since they're utilizing your services, so much so.
But if I could just, one second, update you on the fire extinguisher program that we have done. We're getting a lot of good feedback now already, and it looks like it's going to be a good, a good PR thing for, for us initially, and they don't seem to be blocking it, the minimal $10 fees.
Why don't you talk about it and tell about the dates, and that way you'll...
I don't remember, I don't remember the dates, but what we, what we have done is we've established a handheld fire extinguisher class, a four-hour class, that we have contacted all the...
Motels.
Hotels, hotels, and through...
Restaurants.
And restaurants. Tidying them first, so that their first responders, if you will, that are working there, will have an idea of how to use these fire extinguishers, and instead of looking at it on the wall, they may actually use it first, or call the fire department and use it and see if it helps that wastebasket fire, you know, in the bathroom, or whatever it is, they'll have an idea, and I think that that's, that's something they're going to, they're going to jump on board once they start hiring staff for the summer.
No, I think that's, and it's good, and homeowners can, can sign up for it too, because a lot of times you buy these things and you have them in your closet, I'm sure mine's probably expired right now.
This one specifically is for...
The commercial.
The commercial industry.
Okay.
If it goes well, and it doesn't cost us any more than what we thought it would cost us, then we will also look at that, you know, in conjunction with the Ralph Perry Company, they're, they are giving us the fire extinguishers at no cost, they're donating those to us, and they will take them back and redo them, so, that gives us an opportunity maybe to offer it to just general civilian population.
You should, you know, ask a little questionnaire at the end, or have the employers send something back to you, like, was this helpful, was it useful? You know, what could have been done better, what couldn't, and, and that way you could make this a regular thing for businesses.
We always give a course evaluation sheet out to all the students at the end of any class, so, we get feedback on a constant basis.
Well, I was going to say, if you could produce something that's, that's a small pamphlet or, or an eight-by-eleven glossy, that go, my restaurant, for example, has at least three different kinds of fire extinguishers, depending on what part of the restaurant it's in.
We have notified all of the chambers, all of the chambers of commerce, and we have asked them to disseminate to their members. You're not a member of the chamber of commerce, well then you should get it.
We don't.
You should get it by email.
I can tell you where, 100% untrained.
Because we email to them, they were going to email it out to their members.
Why don't you send it to me, I'll send it to you.
But, you know, but in a lot of things, sometimes that eight-by-ten glossy on the